Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of December 16, 2020. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
And Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Thank you. On March 4th, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. The governor also passed several executive orders, including the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings like this one. And as such, Councilmember Smith is participating by phone, and the council votes tonight will be conducted by roll call. Due to the governor's executive order which waived the Brown Act provisions requiring physical presence of the public in light of the pandemic, the city council meeting will only be open to family members and special guests of incoming and outgoing council members for purposes of tonight's installation and valediction ceremony. Public comments on a specific agenda item or general public comments not related to a specific item on the agenda were encouraged to be made by the city clerk through email -- to the city clerk through email by no later than 1:00 PM today, or by phone by no later than 4:00 PM, the Tuesday prior to the council meeting. Those comments received in such a manner will not be read, but were provided to the council before the meeting and included as part of the permanent public record for the meeting. Sorry we had to go through all of that, but that is just part of how it works. Madam Clerk, where are we now?
Public statements.
We have no public statements. So, welcome, welcome everyone, to the installation and valediction ceremony for the 54th City Council Meeting of the City of Bakersfield. And at this time, we have the privilege of having Dr. David Go, Senior Pastor of the Garden, to offer the invocation, and that's at Councilmember Sullivan's request. Following the invocation, we're going to ask you to please remain standing for the presentation of colors by the Bakersfield Police Department. And then, following that, Councilmember Sullivan's granddaughter, Jessica Chavez, will lead us in the pledge. So at this point, would you all please stand?
The humble birth, yet powerful life of Jesus. His servant leadership and sacrifice on behalf of those who needed grace, justice, and hope is a great inspiration to us as community leaders. The model of what true leadership looks like, the model of what true leadership seeks to achieve. And it's my privilege to open this time of prayer tonight in which we honor and give thanks to outgoing council members Willie Rivera and Jackie Sullivan. Jackie, I think we've been doing stuff in the community all 25 years. And to congratulate and ask for divine wisdom and strength for re-elected council members Andre Gonzalez, Bruce Freeman, and incoming council members Eric Arias and Patty Gray. Patty's been a part of the Garden Congregation for over a decade, and I know she really wishes she could be here tonight. But would you join me in prayer, please? Heavenly Father, in times like we are living in, where there are so many pressing needs and answers to questions that have never been asked before, we are so thankful that you walk towards us in our need. And as we celebrate the birth of Jesus and remember the message of what that means to us, that God is with us, we take comfort and strength in that. Father, we ask for grace, Lord, and wisdom and direction for our community. Lord, we pray blessing on those, Lord, that have served well, Lord, here at the city council, and ask for your favor upon those who continue to serve and are newly elected. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. And now the colors.
I was first introduced to these council chambers in 1995 when I said the Pledge of Allegiance at my Nana's swearing and ceremony. I was five years old, and now 25 years later, I am honored to help usher in the closing act of my Nana's career as a public servant. Nana, thank you for being unapologetically loyal in serving this community and guiding Bakersfield's development in the most unique period of history. Now please join me in honoring our great nation with the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Well, it's so good to see friends and family and our elected officials out there. And tonight, we get to welcome Assemblyman Member Rudy Salas. And do we have with us Supervisor Leticia Perez? She was on the list. There you are. Welcome. Thank you so much. And to family and friends, we are so glad to have you join us for this very, very joyous occasion. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Adoption of Resolution Number 192-2020, accepting city clerk certification declaring the results of the general municipal election held in the City of Bakersfield on November 3rd, 2020.
Vice Mayor.
Motion to adopt.
You have a motion to adopt. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for the vote?
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. So now we get to move right on, and I'm going to invite you, Councilmember Rivera, to June 2013, when you were just a child, you were elected. I remember your service with Supervisor Rubio and years and years of training there, and just your heart for public servant -- service. Thank you so much, and we've been able to see that up there. You've really cared for the community, caring for the southeast community, caring for young people, and forming the Youth Commission, probably because of your youth, just encouraging partnership and making sure that residents are cared for. So thank you so much. Councilmember Willie Rivera has chaired the Safe Neighborhoods Committee. He's been on numbers of committees, Budget and Finance, Planning and Development, Joint City/County Standing Committee to Combat Gang Violence. And that would have been your former boss's longest name in the world. You've also been on LAFCO, the League of California Cities Latino Caucus, and the League's San Joaquin Valley Division. And so, it is my honor tonight, on behalf of the city, to present this to you. Presented to Willie Rivera, Councilmember Ward 1, in appreciation for seven years of leadership, dedicated service, and your commitment to the citizens of Bakersfield. City of Bakersfield, 2020. And we -- And now, the Mayor's Medal. Might have to grow a little to make this happen. And something that not very many people get. Just in case you ever need to come back, the key to the City of Bakersfield, presented to Willie Rivera in honor of seven years of outstanding leadership and service as Councilmember Ward 1, and in recognition of your commitment to improving the quality of life for Bakersfield residents. And now, let's see whether --
It's still in there?
It's still in here.
Still there.
There we go.
Beautiful.
And we have a very special person who I'd like to share with you tonight, Assemblyman Rudy Salas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate that. Appreciate your words, Willie. I don't know how far back to go. A little bit. You know, as one of the youngest council members elected, we know that really your service started way before then, as a young teenager, wanting to make a difference in the community and getting involved not only with the campaigns, but the issues of the community. And I think that's something that struck a lot of us, that at a very young age, you've always had the heart to serve and to give back to your community and to do what's right. And so, it's been a privilege seeing you grow throughout the years, but also what you've done here at the city council, with the Youth Commission, getting more people involved, bringing the issues that a lot of us see in the southeast to light, not only for the entire city council, but for the entire community. And so, we just truly appreciate everything that you've done. I have a resolution on behalf of the State of California to commemorate your time here, but we really appreciate everything. And one of the best things that I love about these resolutions is it's something that will live in the state's archives in perpetuity. It'll -- if anybody ever researches your name, they will see all of the great accomplishments that you've done, not only for the state of California, but the residents of Kern County and for the valley. And with that, we truly do appreciate everything that you've done, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Whatever you want to take with you. You'll have an opportunity to share with us later. And that resolution, thank you so much, Assemblyman Salas, that's signed by all four of our local legislators, so we thank all of them. And at this point, 25 years later, Ms. Jackie Sullivan, would you join me down here, please? 25 years, what does that feel like? That's a long time. It's a lifetime of service. But you know, I know, Councilmember, that even before 25 years, your heart's always been to serve, to serve people, because you love people so much, because it's an overflowing of your expression for the love of God. And that's the only reason, I think, that anybody would serve for 25 years. 1995, the longest-serving council member, 25 years. I don't -- I can't imagine anybody will be able to break that record, and we are just so privileged to have that service. You were the first woman on the First Woman Majority Council, and I don't know whether we'll ever see that again, where with all the guys around. But certainly, you know, you have been a trailblazer in that. But I think what many people will remember the most is your trailblazing for "In God We Trust" and getting our national motto in so many different places. And now, since the time you started that, more than 700 government buildings in 37 states are now displaying "In God We Trust," our national motto. Thank you so much for your leadership there. And then, I know because of Joyce, with your strong leadership, AIDS and HIV awareness has grown in our community. So thank you out of heartbreak. Wonderful thing was able to emerge from that, and thank you so much for your leadership. It's always been an honor on World AIDS Day to stand together with you to talk about the need for awareness there. City Council Committees, you've probably been on every committee, but I know that community service is always a passion of yours and then led and lit. But thank you so, so much for that service. And now, it's my honor to present to you, presented to Jackie Sullivan, Councilmember Ward 6, in appreciation for 25 years of leadership, dedicated service, and your commitment to the citizens of Bakersfield as the longest-serving council member. Councilmember Jackie Sullivan from the City of Bakersfield. Let's turn around and you can picture yourself. Put that down. Right there. And of course, I should give you many, many medals. I just, I should have brought 25, but -- Thank you so much. That's the Mayor's Medal. And then, you'll be back visiting us, so we want to make sure you have the door. Key to the door, the key to the City of Bakersfield, presented to Jackie Sullivan in honor of 25 years of outstanding leadership and service as Councilmember Ward 6, and in recognition of your commitment to improving the quality of life for Bakersfield residents. Thank you so much. It's my honor to be able to present this to you.
Oh, it's beautiful.
Turn around a little. Hit it down a little. We'll follow Tom's directions. And there's more to come. Councilmember Sullivan, Congressman Kevin McCarthy has prepared a tribute from the U.S. House of Representatives, and it begins with, "Madam Speaker, I rise today to honor Bakersfield's longest-serving city council member, Jackie Sullivan." The tribute goes on to describe your life, your accomplishments, and your collaboration with the Congressman. And in honor of your retirement, Congressman Kevin McCarthy entered this tribute into the congressional record where it will be enshrined in the Library of Congress for the duration of the republic. It's my honor, Councilmember, to present this on behalf of the Congressman. Everyone needs a street sign. Here's your very own street sign, but what do we remember you for? "In God We Trust." And also, from the Public Works Department, Nick Fiddler brought this down, Jackie Sullivan, City of Bakersfield, 25 years of service. So let's display your street sign proudly.
Oh, my goodness.
Want to do one without me? Turn around and just do one without me. You don't need me in every photo. Very good. Assemblyman Rudy Salas.
Jackie, I've actually had the pleasure of serving with you on the Bakersfield City Council, and I can tell you, it was a pleasure always being able to look to your wisdom and your guidance on the council. But we do have a resolution for you. It's in the mail. It's on the way. But wanted to just thank you for your service. Obviously, we remember all of the campaigns. I remember even back then, the "In God We Trust" campaigns, when you were doing the fundraisers and the events, everything that you've done for the community in terms of AIDS and HIV awareness and the community events that we've held at the parks and throughout the city of Bakersfield. And we just want to say thank you on behalf of myself, Senator Grove, Senator Hurtado, Assemblymember Fong. Thank you for your service, and the state of California appreciates everything that you've done for the residents of Kern County and the valley. So congratulations.
David, Mr. Brust, has something special. It's a surprise.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my goodness.
This is for you.
Oh, my goodness.
On behalf of the Buck Owens family and KUZZ, we present Councilmember Jackie Sullivan with the world-famous Buck Owens Red, White, and Blue Guitar. And it says as follows to Jackie Sullivan, "Thanks for your years of public service to Buck Owens family, December 16, 2020. Like Councilmember Sullivan, the Buck Owens family loves and cares for our community. We celebrate those that have given tirelessly to make our city better, like Councilmember Sullivan. Your dedication and sacrifice to our city is unparalleled. And tonight, we thank you for making Bakersfield a better place." Congratulations.
Wonderful. David, it's just exciting how very, very special. Please thank everyone for me, and let people know that I love country music, I love live music and concerts, so I will treasure this. I will treasure it. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, KUZZ. And now, Councilmember, I'm going to ask you to join us back up there. We're going to take a look at the screens for a very special video presentation. Thank you, Jackie. 25 years. Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. And before we invite our departing colleagues to say a few words, I'm going to invite Supervisor Leticia Perez, who is the Chair of the Kern County Board of Supervisors, to offer some remarks.
Karen, thank you for your graciousness in inviting me to speak tonight for just a moment. I'd like to say to Jackie, a fellow sister in service, what a delight it has been to know you. For the entirety of my time in service here, you have been simply full of love and grace. Every time I have seen you, every time you have seen my family, you have extended the same graciousness and kindness to all of those in my circle. And I appreciate that. I think that goes a long way. I think it is consistent with the spirit of who we are in Bakersfield and Kern County on the whole. So I want to say that it has been a delight to know you and to serve alongside you in a similar capacity, and I wish you the best, and I thank you for your service to Bakersfield. Thank you. Willie, my little brother. Thank you for your service to the Fifth District, to Ward 1. I am so proud of you, and I am thankful for your friendship and for your service. God bless you and Godspeed to you in your next chapter. And I will, I will still keep bothering you, especially to write me checks. Thank you for --
[Laughter]
Thank you for that afternoon that you called me and said, "We need to do something in the MLK area." There's a lot of exciting things happening there. I think the city and county can join in a first-ever opportunity to rejuvenate excitement and opportunity in that community. And so, I don't often get the opportunity to give credit where it's due, but thank you for what you launched there and what you inspired in me. I will miss you. Thank you. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Supervisor. Councilmember Rivera, the next chapter, we're excited for you. I really am excited. I know it's a totally different approach, but you're going to take your heart into that next chapter. And now, would you like to offer some comments?
So, believe it, I actually didn't, because I didn't assume I was going to actually talk tonight, so I made that mistake, which probably surprises all of you. I mean, this is, this is, this is bittersweet, and I don't know that it's necessarily fully sunk in yet, and I'm sure it will in the next few days. The biggest, the biggest reminder, I got a call this morning from a dear friend who said he had no more use for me and that our relationship was now over. The best remi -- The best reminder of the closing of this chapter in my life will probably be the fact that none of you will ever call me again, and that breaks my heart. But I promise I won't be like other former councilmembers who probably need no introduction. I will not email you every day or numerous times a day because I know that the city's in very good hands under your leadership. I am very, very excited at the prospect of another young, bright, capable young man sitting in this chair here in probably five minutes or 10 minutes, replacing me and carrying on the baton of good service representing southeast Bakersfield. I know he will do an excellent job. And I by no means have ever felt the need to stand in the way of progress or new blood. And I think that's what you represent, Eric, and I think you're going to do an excellent job. And I'm so excited to see you grow in this position and do incredible things on behalf of the residents of Ward 1. This has been a tremendous experience. There are probably two things that are clearly apparent now. One is I turned 30, so now I feel old. And two, this suit does not fit the same way it did when I first started. And other than that, really all I have are the experiences and the relationships and the memories I've developed with all of you, councilmembers that are up here now and councilmembers that preceded you, staff who are in the audience and who are at home now and staff that's also preceded, staff sitting here today. We have an amazing group of people making this city run. And it's not just this group. It is a huge number of people standing behind us, making sure that we don't screw things up, truthfully. I mean, that's the reality at the end of the day. And we have an excellent staff that I will miss. They're extremely capable and I wish if I could, I would take them all to go work for me somewhere else at some point. Maybe I'll try that. But I am very grateful for this opportunity, very thankful for the kind words from the mayor, from Assemblymember Salas, and from my big sister, Letitia. You know, I wouldn't be here without their support. I wouldn't be here without the support of my sister, my brother-in-law who are in the audience, my mother, and my father-in-law who's in the audience as well. And then my fiancee, who's there in the back, Molly, who will be at the center of the next chapter of my life. I mean, that's probably what I'm most excited to get started on. We'll be married next year, if the world lets us, and we'll get started on the next chapter of our life. So I thank you for this. I know it was certainly a short time by comparison to my colleague at the opposite end, but it has been extremely meaningful and impactful to me. It has been the experience of my lifetime so far. And I'm so thankful to the citizens of Bakersfield for giving me this great honor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have the guests. Absolutely. Thank you so much, Councilmember. Let's have your guests stand up, the one you named a number. And would you all stand up if you're a guest of Councilmember Rivera? We just want to be able to recognize you. You've been a part of his life, too. Thank you so much, friends. Thank you. And now, Councilmember Jackie Sullivan, 25 years.
This is a very emotional night for me. I feel a little weepy, not in an unhappy way, and not in a happy way, but just deeply moved and I'm thankful to God for giving me this wonderful privilege, wonderful opportunity. I'm proud to have my family here, my son, Richard Bowden, and his wife, Josie, and Julie, my daughter, my first daughter, Julie, Julie Bowden, and her daughter. In fact, we have four generations of women here tonight. Jessica, thank you, Jessica, for your pledge, and her husband and her three children, Zoe, Isaac, and Sheila. I love you all and my daughter, my youngest daughter, Linda, Linda Bowden, and her husband, Scott, and her wonderful grandson, Kevin Reed. So very proud to have you all here tonight and appreciated your support. I love the city government. It has been just, it's been everything. It's been wonderful, it's been stressful, exciting, interesting, and truly, local government, city and county government is where we can really make a difference and we can really have some good control over the people that we support to elect. It's important that we elect good people to government on a local level and then they work up. And I've always been very proud of our council. You know, we have a good reputation. We've had no, you know, nothing, basically nothing negative. We, at times, we usually agree on most things. We're elected from the seven parts of town, which is a wonderful plan, and we usually agree, sometimes we don't. But then we vote, we hold our breath, we never know for sure how the vote is going to go. So we look up and we see if we were on the winning side or not the winning side. But then we go right on. We respect each other, we're professionals, we just, and we know that we have our heart in the right place because we do. And when we have an opinion, it's, we have struggled many times with which way to go on certain things, but then it just, we're able to come to a decision. And it's a wonderful, I just encourage people certainly to be aware and be interested in their government and encourage young people to get involved. You know, it's nonpartisan, but it's really quite partisan, which is great, you know? But we act and we make our decisions for the good of our city. The staff, wonderful staff. I was very, we were all privileged to work under the leadership of Allen Tandy for 25 years. Good leadership and we just have a lot of wonderful progress. And then Christian, I am very honored to have had a part in selecting you to take Allen's place and just, you know, you're going to have a wonderful career here. Total, such good reports from the staff, you know, bringing people together. And I've mentioned different little things to you and you'll always say, "Well, certainly we'll, you know, we'll see how the council feels about it." And that's a perfect answer. That's what city managers do. And so you're going to have a wonderful tenure here. But I just, Jenny, Jenny, you're wonderful. I met your son, saw your son again tonight. We've all heard about him from Little League, you know, and he was here tonight. I appreciate him being here. I loved seeing him again. And of course, Nick Fiddler, I worked with his dad, Randy, you know, so we go way back. You know, the entertainment that has been brought to town, my daughters and I, we love concerts, we love music, and we go to concerts. So it's just, and Ariel, of course, Steve Ekerson, he's done such, and Diane Hoover, Diane, thank you for, and you're retiring too. So yes, yes, retiring too after a wonderful career here, accomplished a lot. So I'm just feeling very, very moved and very, very appreciative. What an honor, what an honor to have served these 25 years. And I appreciate all the support that I've had, 70 elections. Campaigning is getting more and more difficult, as we know, but that's just part of it. So anyway, I just am very delighted to, and now I'm passing on, I'm thankful and delighted to be passing on this chair and the representation of Ward 6 to, and Julie's husband, Bob, has just arrived. Thank you for coming after work, Bob. Happy to have you here. But Patty Gray, you know, I'm just thankful that she campaigned hard, but she and her husband have been around for a long time, business people, and worked hard, knocked on a lot of doors, introduced herself. That's what it takes to have a good, strong campaign. And Rudy, yes, we work together and just thank you for being here. And Letitia, you know, just, you have a heart too, Letitia, that comes through all the time, and your husband. So we're a great group, you know, we work hard and that's, you know, we're dedicated. We love what we do, we love our city, and it is service, it is service-oriented. So the media's been very, very good, very good to us. So hopefully I haven't, I think I mentioned Ariel, she's the ticket girl for the concerts. But anyway, it's been wonderful and I just deeply appreciate the time that I have been able to serve. And I'll be keeping in touch and continuing to work on In God We Trust through our nonprofit In God We Trust America. I know that it's an important part of our country's history and just, I love, I love working on that. And elected people from across the country are just very, very appreciative of what we've started here in Bakersfield, California. Very quickly, I met someone from, we go to conferences and the national city and county conferences and part of the expo, and I met someone from New Mexico, introduced myself as a councilmember from Bakersfield and the founder of In God We Trust America. He was so amazed that there was even one conservative in California. I mean, seriously, he knew I was telling the truth, but he was just amazed. So yes, we have a lot of patriots. We love God, we love country, and certainly our county of Kern is right in the lead. And we now have 144 cities and counties in California that are displaying our national motto. So I've worked under three mayors, Bob Price, Harvey Hall, who set the bar very high, I told Karen that. And now Karen, though you have just, you're so dedicated and tireless, and if you're invited and you're limited just one place at a time still, but if you're not already scheduled and committed, you're there and people know that they have your support and you just do such a great job. And each councilmember, I love you all. And Willie, is that Molly clear in the back? Wave, Molly. Ah, oh, wow, congratulations, congratulations. So anyway, just at the moment, it was my turn, I was blank, couldn't think of anything to say, and now I've continued on and on. So please forgive me for that, but I'm just overwhelmed at all of the wonderful memories and the progress we've been able to make for Bakersfield. And as they say, the best is always, the best is always yet to come. So thank you, Christian, for coming for the interview. And Jenny, you just have wisdom and dedication and always, always open to our telephone calls with suggestions and advice when we need it. So you're very appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Sullivan. We love you and we just appreciate your heart for our community and your love for all the people that you named. And guests of Councilmember Sullivan, I know you have a lot of family out there. Would you stand up so we can acknowledge you too, please? Thank you all for sharing Councilmember Sullivan with us. And now, colleagues, if any of you would like to offer any comments, would you please go ahead and just request to speak? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with Willie. Well, buddy, congratulations. We really had a good time together, serving with each other. Anyway, it's a little emotional for me because we partnered together on several things. We were part of Safe Neighborhoods together. We got Shot Spotter put through for the community, which was just huge for areas of this city. We also partnered with Cal Water to ensure that underserved people within both of our areas receive those programs and had information on those programs. And when I was kind of scared to death of participating in Dancing with the Stars, I was able to rope you in and you got a partner and the two of us did that and we raised a lot of money for a good cause. So I wish you well, my friend, and thank you for your service to the city of Bakersfield. Jackie, before I moved down here, we were chair partners for four years. You're just the distinguished woman of grace and poise and have been the moral rudder of this city for 25 years. I thank you for your service to this city. You've never been scared to get your hands dirty. And I've seen people that are, you know, big men that had an idea and when you wanted to push back, you could very gently and say, "You know, I don't think that's a good idea." And see these big people just kind of quaking their boots and say, "Well, okay, Councilmember Sullivan, what do you think?" One other story, it was a few years ago at Christmas, and the city has this big ladder truck that they put people on top for the Christmas parade and councilmembers are invited to go up top too. And a fireman said to you and goes, "Well, Councilmember Sullivan, would you prefer to sit up in a cab?" And as kids and staff are climbing up on the ladder, you go, "No, I'll go up top too." And you climbed up there like a jungle gym. It was pretty impressive. So thank you again for your service to the city and I'm going to miss sitting next to you because I'm going to be sliding back here soon. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Willie, I'm going to miss you, man. I'm going to miss sitting right next to you. Over the last four years, we've had an opportunity to work together on a number of issues. We've had an opportunity to fight one another on a number of issues. But through it all, I've grown in much respect for you and have really admired your intellect and your talent and have learned a lot from you. And I want to thank you for your partnership and your commitment to an area of town that I think we both truly love. And thank you for your service, man, and hope we can work together in the future. All the best to you and to Molly back there. And Jackie, I met you when I was 17 years old at East Bakersfield High School and I was the ASB vice president and we brought the AIDS Memorial Quilt to East High to raise awareness of HIV and AIDS to the student body there. And you came on campus and shared your story and I think at that moment, we became friends. And I certainly looked up to you in admiration for your service and speaking to raise awareness in our community regarding HIV and AIDS. And I appreciate you. I want to echo a point that the Vice Mayor made in that I've been really proud of this council for a long time and where we've been able to lead the city over the last four years. And I attribute some of that to you and your leadership. What I'm going to miss the most is after every contentious meeting and after every debate and after we see that vote that you referred to, you would always remind us that we were still one council and we could disagree on issues, but we could also come back together as prof- as professionals and with mutual respect. And I always, I always appreciated that reminder. And I will, I will join in with my colleagues to continue to remind us that we can be, we can lead, we can debate, but we can also work with mutual respect and, and for the betterment of our community. So thank you and all the best to you as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Weir.
Thank you. So Jackie, I, we've been involved in a lot of different ventures and programs and subjects for more than just my 14 years here. So it's, it has been really good to get to know you. I can always depend on you coming up, saying hi, and that beautiful smile. I will miss that. But I'll probably bug in anyway. So you're not going very far away. And we'll still run into each other. And I look forward to that. So congratulations on a great job. I really appreciate you. Willie, your smile not so good.
I'm smiling now.
You are? Yeah. Well, it's hard to tell. So it, it's really been nice knowing you and getting to know you. And I think we have had a very good relationship here. And I always respect your words and your comments. And I hope I was of some help to you at some point along the way. But I wish you the very best in your future. And I'm sure that you will be outstanding as you move forward. So congratulations, buddy.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Freeman.
Well, I guess I get to be the last speaker, but we're going to lose our youth and our, and all the enthusiasm and creativity that Willie's brought to us, which I do appreciate. I have four children around Willie's age, I guess a little bit older. You just turned 30. I was just getting out of graduate school when I was 30. So you have a lot of chapters ahead of you. I think you're going to be successful in all of them. It's going to be exciting. But I really will, I'll miss your, your youthful enthusiasm and your creativity and can-do. I think that brings a lot to the council. And I'm glad Eric's come along to replace you. I, I think he'll bring the same type of, of thoughts. You know, we do need your youth. Sometimes they need to listen to us a little more, but we do need them, we do need them pushing us and we need their creativity. So that's been great having you on the council. And Jackie, I'll miss your wisdom and all the leadership you've offered and the, just the example of just great character that you have been for all of us. You're just, both of you have been, done this, just public servants. And you do this because you want to make Better, Bakersfield a better place and always have. And I used to be on the other side for 21 years at that microphone, trying to talk you into projects. So spent a lot of time with the council. And both of you have been just exemplary council people. I appreciate all that you've both done. And I'm both, you're going to be successful in the next chapter. So thank you for your service and, and good luck.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Thank you so much. It is now that time where we get to say goodbye now. But thank you, friends. So more than colleagues, you are friends. And we just wish you all the best. Thank you so much for your service. And we look forward to that next chapter. And so now, as you get to depart and go on, you, you make sure, I know Molly's the reason this is all happening, Councilmember Sullivan also. Thank you. And we'll ask you now to leave your seats. And then Councilmember-elect Eric Arias, would you join the city clerk down there along with Councilmember Gonzalez and Councilmember Bruce Freeman? Councilmember-elect Patty Gray is ill and unable to be here tonight. And she'll have her installation at a later As they're coming down, let's give it up again for Councilmember Willie Rivera, Councilmember Jackie Sullivan. Thank you so much.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
Thank you.
Congratulations, Councilmember Gonzalez. Congratulations, Councilmember Freeman. And now for the first time, we get to say congratulations to Councilmember Eric Arias. Let's give it up for them. And councilmembers, now if you would join me back up here on Welcome, Councilmember Arias. And we'd love to hear from you now. We have to have the changing of the nameplate now. Is he official now? All right, very good. Councilmember.
I've heard that these things are a little sensitive. So please let me know if I get a little too loud. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. And before I get into my, my long list of thank yous, I just want to say congratulations to my now colleagues, Councilman Andre Gonzalez and Councilman Bruce Freeman. And then also incoming Councilwoman Patty Gray, who couldn't be here with us tonight. My prayers are with her. And now I just want to say thank you to everybody who has, has been there from day one, even before I started campaigning for this seat. First and foremost, my parents who are here in the audience, Monica Arias. My amazing father, Salvador Arias. And I don't know where the camera is, but to all of my siblings back home who I'm sure are watching, thank you guys for always supporting me even before this campaign. And I just want to say thank you to everybody else, special dignitaries who have been acknowledged tonight, Assemblyman Salas, and of course Carla Castilla. And then of course, one of my great mentors, Supervisor Perez, her husband Fernando, and Christian Romo. Thank you guys always for being there and being the best of friends to me. And before I continue, I just want to say, in my short time transitioning into this position, it has been, become abundantly clear that the city staff has hired and, and maintained a staff that is well-equipped, that is competent, that is full of wonderful leadership, and I think is ready to carry us into this next chapter after COVID. So I just want to commend you and commend our wonderful city manager on that transition. And really appreciated every meeting that we had and getting me caught up to speed on, on the very important issues that are in front of us here at the city. And so today, it is the honor of my lifetime to take this oath to serve my city as the first Filipino councilman here in the city of Bakersfield. Although it brings me great excitement to be taking on such an important role, it goes without saying that this job will certainly come with its challenges. Today, as, as we all know, our community is in deep crisis. Tens of thousands of our fellow neighbors have applied for unemployment. Hundreds have lined up at food distributions week after week. And many businesses have been forced to close, not only temporarily, but permanently. And hundreds, of course, have lost their lives at the hands of COVID-19, right here in our backyard. We are in the midst of a pretty scary storm, the likes of which we haven't seen since a day of 9/11, a time when I was very young, but still to this day remember the fear, the anxiety, and the terror that we felt as a community. A time in which our country was shocked, but also a time when my father, at the time a very young Marine from Little Bakersfield, who stepped up to the plate and looked into the storm of 9/11 and said he was ready to jump right in. And it was after 9/11 when they were ramping up training and it became all more rigorous down at Camp Pendleton, when he shattered his knee, leaving our family without its sole income earner. He brought us back to our hometown, the only place that we knew here in Bakersfield, to rejoin the rest of our family. And with a growing family of four children, he worked nights at Juvenile Hall and went to school during the day to earn his bachelor's degree, his master's degree, and several other credentials in the meantime. And so my hat is off to you, sir. Tonight, I think that you have paved the way for me to make it through college and go off and be the first one to graduate from a school outside of the city. And then to come back and, and lead a career in public service and serve the community that we know and love. And so if I could just have you just stand up, I want to recognize you and everything that you've done for this community. And with that, I just want to say thank you to everyone. I look forward to the opportunity to work with my colleagues here on the dais and, and lead our community to building back better here after COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. And now, before the benediction, can we just have Councilmember Arias, Councilmember Gonzalez, and Councilmember Freeman stand for a round of applause? Congratulations, colleagues. Thank you. And now Dr. David Gou will lead us in the Please stand.
For unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulders. And his name shall be called Wonderful Counselor, the mighty God, the everlasting Father, the prince of shalom, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated or, Willie, at this point, this is when we're going to take our little recess. We have nothing but cakes out there for you to take and individually wrapped clam shells. And we would encourage you to observe healthy practices as you exit. And we will reconvene in 10 minutes. So at this time, 6:29, we'll reconvene the City Council meeting of December 16th, 2020. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gou.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
And Councilmember Gray.
And you get to hear this again. Due to the Governor's executive order, which waived the Brown Act provisions requiring physical presence of the public in light of the COVID pandemic, the City Council meeting will only be open to, sorry, family members and outgoing council members for the purposes of tonight's installation and valediction ceremony. Public comments on a specific agenda item or general public comments not related to a specific agenda item were encouraged to be made by this, to the city clerk through email by no later than 1:00 p.m. today, or by phone by no later than 4:00 p.m. the Tuesday prior to the council meeting. Those comments received in such a manner will not be read, but were provided by the city clerk to the council before this meeting and included as part of the permanent public record for the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
No.
No. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Presentations, we have a retirement presentation to Diane Hoover, Recreation and Parks Director, for 15 years of service to the city of Bakersfield.
Thank you, Mayor Gou and councilmembers. It's a privilege and an honor tonight to honor Diane Hoover as our Parks and Recreation Department Director. I wanted to share a few thoughts. The fact that Diane has served as a department head for 15 years is remarkable. Those that have been on this council a long time would know that that's an uncommon event. And so we're so thankful for your service, Diane. The city's changed in remarkable ways over those 15 years. The city has grown, and Diane made sure that parks grew with that development. In the last 15 years, there have been 13 new parks. And we will invite Diane back for our 14th, which will be in this coming year. Nine spray parks have been installed. We've expanded our aquatics programs through innovation and grants. We've also built three dog parks to meet that expanding interest. There's been dozens of playgrounds and courts that have been renovated, hundreds of trees, thousands of shrubs, maybe tens of thousands of flowers. Diane has held a vision for our regional parks, to see what that can bring to our community 10 and 20 years from now. It takes that foresight. So many grants have been received. In this coming two years alone, we'll have $6 million in grant funding. And think about what that looks like multiplied over 15 years. Diane, this past year, some of you may not know that she's been the president of the American Academy of Park and Recreation Administration. And to have one of our department heads be a president of a national association like that is a remarkable achievement and really good for Bakersfield. We've had great national participation and even been a finalist in, the national gold medal finalist in 2019 and 2014 through that association. Diane has brought innovating concepts like naming rights and some of the irrigation controls that we're working on in our climate. And even in the last years, I worked on this concept of rapid response teams. And what does that look like? But it's not just what Diane has done, but more so how she's done it. Coming on board, I could feel Diane's passion and love for our parks and our programs. COVID and having to close some of those things, I could tell physically hurt Diane. Her motto is to leave it better than it's been found. And there's no question that Diane has done that. She's a true professional, a community asset. And for me, it means a lot to say a true public servant. So I want to present to you this plaque on behalf of the city manager's office and your colleagues and the senior management team in the city, in recognition of your service of 15 and a half years.
Thank you.
Leaving it better than you found it for 15 years. And you've done so much, Diane. It's been a joy to work together with you. And it's my honor to be able to present this certificate of recognition presented to Diane Hoover in honor of 15 years of dedicated service to the city of Bakersfield, in recognition of your numerous accomplishments as Director of Recreation and Parks, including the opening of 13 parks and nine spray parks, in recognition of your outstanding leadership to build and support beautiful spaces for family and community gatherings, recreation and leisure, and in recognition of your resolute commitment to promote youth sports and a healthy and active lifestyle for Bakersfield residents. Congratulations, Diane. Best wishes. It's just a joy to present that to you. And while we're doing this, we'll just do all of this together. And while we're doing this, we'll just do all of this together. The mayor's medal. Congratulations, and we'll do that. Diane, would you like to offer some comments?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Goh. And also, Christian, City Manager. I do have a few things to say, and none of this would be possible without you and your support, City Council and Mayor, and also the City Manager's Office. I couldn't have done it alone, never are alone in any of this, and I really appreciate all that support that you gave, the funding and the staffing levels that are needed in accomplishing these many things. And I also want to thank you for supporting the large sports parks that are going to be built and built in stages. It takes time to build that big of a complex and those complexes, one in Ward III and then another one in Ward VI, and we just really appreciate that. The children of this community really need it, and it is made possible through the partnerships that we've developed with AYSO, Bakersfield Southwest Baseball, and Golden Empire Youth Football. It couldn't have kept going without all of their partnerships as well. And I'd like to give a shout-out to Alan Tandy for hiring me 15 and 1/2 years ago. So, I was actually fired from my previous job, and he took a risk in hiring me and got me here, and I stayed a long time. And I really do appreciate the current leadership team of Christian, Jackie, and Chris, and their also support of Parks and Recreation and the landscapes out in the field, too. Big shout-out to my staff, Darren, Raj, Fidel, and Keith, for their leadership as they carry forward many of the things that we've started here in this community. The employees of the Recreation and Parks Department are on the front lines of all of that's happening in the community every day. Now that we've gone through, going through COVID and still continue to go through, we had to change some schedules so they wouldn't ride in the same vehicle together, and they would stay apart. Then we were able, as the restrictions lessened a little bit, we were able to bring them back together in smaller teams, but they still had to wear the masks and be very cognizant of the sanitation in the restrooms and throughout the whole park. And the community responded. The community responded as if there were no other place to go. Everything else closed, parks stayed open, and thanks to the staff, they really meant a lot to this community. And I think in all the 15 and 1/2 years I've been here, that these last few months have been definitely the most challenging, but also the most rewarding because of the community response to our parks. And we were able to close some things and then open things, and throughout this, we were able to keep the pool open at McMurtry for the lap swimmers. And the lap swimmers are vocal, and they will tell you, get this pool back open. So, thank you again, and the community is blessed with all the volunteer services that are provided here in this community. And so, we are not just responsible for the parks, as you know, but also the streetscapes, and it's a tour, everyday trash and trash and weeds and trash and weeds. But we try, and they work very, very hard. I want to give one final shout-out to Linda McVicker. She has been at the Martin Luther King Center for the last part of her career, but she's been here 35 and 1/2 years, and she's retiring the same day I am as well, on Monday. And so, thank you, and many more great years to come here in Bakersfield, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Diane, and let's give it up for her, and then I'll ask Councilmember Weir to make comments. Councilmember Weir.
Well, congratulations, but just between you and me tonight, you are going to stick around and finish my park, right?
Your park will be finished.
That's what I've been hearing. No, is it coming along? I mean...
It is coming along, yes, yes. Nick Thiller in Public Works, he's helping with the design, and yes, it is coming along.
And you're sticking around, right?
No.
Well, that's disappointing. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Diane. We really appreciate it. All the best in your new adventures, and I know there are many new adventures ahead. God bless you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under New Business, we have the election of Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. While we're missing one of our colleagues tonight that hasn't been sworn in yet, and the Vice Mayor represents the body of the council, and I think it's important that the whole council votes for the next Vice Mayor and no one is disenfranchised. So, make a motion that we continue this to the next council meeting.
Thank you. You have a motion. We'll have roll call. Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray. Motion is approved with Councilmember Gray absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar items 10A through 10AS for approval. Staff has received a memorandum regarding item 10AP, the Clean City Initiative, transmitting an agreement. We've also received a staff memorandum regarding items AH, AI, and AK, correcting the titles.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Does any council member wish to recuse themselves from an item? Does any council member wish to pull an item for separate consideration? Seeing none, I make a motion that we approve consent calendar items 10A through 10AS as in Adam-Sam.
You have a motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman. And Councilmember Gray. Motion is approved with Councilmember Gray absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under Deferred Business, we have the CARES Act Funding Update.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. As a formality in reporting back on our CARES funding and meeting some of our federal stimulus requirements, we had prepared this item. There was a presentation that we prepared as well, but I think in the spirit of the evening, the materials have been provided to council. I think we can forego the presentation. We can answer any questions that you may have. In summary, we have spent within the framework that council approved earlier this year. We have taken any funds that were unspent and allocated those towards small business assistance to complete that program, as we had a strong interest in the final week of that program. And there will be one more final accounting of this information brought back in the new year to close it out from that accounting perspective for the federal government. But with that, unless there are any questions, I think we can move forward with this item.
Thank you. Colleagues, does anybody wish to ask a question or make a comment? Seeing none, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion received and filed.
You have a motion. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Parlier. Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman. And Councilmember Gray. Motion is approved with Councilmember Gray absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Colleagues, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? Councilmember Gonzalez, would you like to offer a few comments? I didn't invite you earlier, so...
Mayor, thank you very much. I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank those guests who joined me tonight. Fortunately, my family were unable to attend because of COVID, but they were watching from home. But I just wanted to thank Jim Damian, Abel Moreno, Eric Rivera, Mitchell Patel, and my Minister of Assistant, Gisele Andrade, for being here to support me tonight as I took the oath. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? Well, congratulations again, colleagues, and welcome aboard, new council member. We are so glad to be able to move forward. Merry Christmas, and we will be looking forward to a new year. And if there's nothing further, we're going to stand adjourned, but tonight, I want to remember somebody who invested a lot in our community, Mickey Sturdivant, Marie Mickey Sturdivant, the founder of Mothers Against Senseless Killing and the Exodus House. When I first came back from New York, I just could not imagine hanging out in the southeast neighborhood and in really dangerous areas. And Mickey took me from house to house. We walked very, very dark streets, and I felt perfectly safe. And she taught me so much about the challenges that those neighborhoods face and how we can help move people forward. So, tonight, as we stand adjourned at 6:47, I would like to do that in honor of Marie Mickey Sturdivant. We're adjourned at 6:48.